Good evening, everyone. I'll call our meeting to order here in the chambers at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Other person, Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
All right. I don't believe we have remote electronic attendance. Do we have public comment, Chief?
Got three minutes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Administrator, City Council members. I'm Frances Williams, the Executive Director of Mercado on Fifth. I wanted to take this opportunity, and I know we're on the agenda to speak about some items, but I wanted to take an opportunity to come and formally thank everybody at the city for an incredible season that we're having at Mercado and for your flexibility. You know, we've had some changes and challenges that we've had to adjust to, and you guys have been very accommodating, and I want to acknowledge that. So tonight acknowledges part of that. I also wanted to share some highlights of our season. We've had an incredible experience, continuing with some very key events like Lucha Libre, which Centra Credit Union sponsors, so we're very grateful for that, as well as Sabor de Mercado, which is a food competition, which was very successful. Bob, I saw you there, even though I didn't get a chance to say hello.
I couldn't eat it all.
It's true. We heard that from a lot of people. It's been a beautiful, beautiful year of some great highlights, but that said, it's not without its challenges. I've been doing some data analysis, and our attendance is significantly lower compared to last year. We're down about 37%, and a lot of that has to do with a lot of fear in our Hispanic community right now. So I just, if you weren't already aware, I wanted to bring that to your awareness and let you know that we are seeing that affecting our attendance numbers at Mercado on Fifth. So we are going to be making some updates, doing some rollbacks, looking at, you know, how do we make efficiencies and create, you know, better cost cutting with what we're doing. And that's normal, like we usually see a slowdown in the second half of the season anyways. But that said, we're still very committed to being able to put on our night markets, continue to show off the beauty of the Quad Cities, and particularly Moline and what we're doing. And I also wanted to acknowledge that we've been partnering in other ways, particularly with the Moline Police Department. We just last night finished a five-week citizens academy or police academy that was given in all Spanish, which was incredible. And the feedback, I'm going to be documenting and sharing in a letter to the Chief of Police so that he has that, and my hope is that we can continue that programming and hopefully write some grants to continue to support that work because it is really important. And people left feeling much more relieved and relaxed with the people that they met from the police department, so I'm very happy with those outcomes. Given the climate that we are in and the challenges that we are having this season, I also wanted to formally ask that we not have a closure of 12th Street for September 12th. It is a huge Mexican Independence Day celebration, but we're going to be utilizing our north lot to expand that space because we don't anticipate large numbers for that particular night. So we can, you know, I'll send an email to Macy to document that later, but just wanted to share that formally. And again, thank you for all your support, and we're going to continue to be here now more than ever for our community and celebrating all that is beautiful about our Hispanic culture here in the Quad Cities.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question for council then, because in the agreement that's on the agenda, it does include that item. It does not?
I'm sorry, what about the agenda?
The closure of 12th?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it part of what's in here? I feel like I'm recalling that it's in there, and do we need to amend it, or do we just pass it as is, and then they're not going to close it even if they had the permission to close it?
Yes.
I see a thumbs up from Chief.
Let me just take a look at it real quick. I don't believe that it's.
It was in there.
There's no explanation.
Yeah.
So council's recommendation would be then we just pass it as is, and they just won't close it, and that'll be communicated. Got it. Thank you very much. So. Yeah. Come on up.
Good evening, Your Honor. City Minister Vitas, Members of Council, Dave Harrell, President and CEO of Quad Cities, Joan Kranovich. On our team, just wanted to come and publicly say thank you to Your Honor, Members of Council, Bob, city staff. We had the good fortune on working on an event called The Great Grace on June 22nd. We're affiliated with about 1,100 events throughout a given year, and this was a unique one, where we had 130 vehicles literally going from Minnesota on their way to South Carolina and having overnight downtown Moline. There's a lot of moving parts. It certainly isn't the largest thing that we do, but it's a very complex event that, quite frankly, cannot happen without the collaboration and teamwork and the partnership with city staff across all levels. And so I just wanted to commend the city from every step of the way, just being a wonderful partner, easy to work with, responsive to everything that we could have hoped for, just to make this a very seamless experience for the guests that came in. They had a wonderful experience, and so on behalf of Quad Cities and our team, we brought two things. One is just a sign that says, "Welcome to Moline, Illinois." We're happy to keep it in our office, but we felt like maybe you all could use it for appropriate things. Bob's giving me a wink, so maybe we'll put this in Bob's office. And then another, which is just a framed picture of just some inventory from the event in downtown Moline. So we hope that you'll hang that with pride. And again, on behalf of our board and our professional team, just wanted to say thank you again publicly for all your help and everything that you do for Quad Cities and tourism. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
I feel like we need to give you a round of applause.
If we leave it over here, Barry won't forget it.
That's right. Don't stick it in your closet, Barry.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
I believe there are some public comments to be read.
I do have two.
And are there any more from the audience? Nope. All right, so two to be read.
Good morning. I'm sorry that I can't be there in person, as I'm enjoying my last few days in Spain. I would have liked to be there to applaud the work and service of Commissioner Vicki Graves when the mayor recognizes her tonight. The main purpose of my email today is to offer comment on Cal item 8.13. I am writing to show my support for the proposed code amendment that reduces minimum lot sizes and would urge the council to vote in favor. I serve as the Chair of the Housing Production Committee of the Quad Cities Housing Council, and this ordinance revision is in line with one of our top priorities. We agree with the argument that removing this size barrier will have a favorable outcome for Moline and the creation of new housing units. Thank you. Sam Moyer, Moline resident and Plan Commissioner.
Okay. Go ahead. All right. Council members, as Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm writing to express my support for the proposed small lot ordinance amending R2 zoning. This is a practical, targeted change that will allow for a greater diversity of housing options while preserving the character of our neighborhoods. Under our current zoning, R2 requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. While smaller lots can be permitted in certain narrow circumstances, such as specific infill or twin house projects, there is no general allowance for building single-family homes on lots smaller than 6,000 square feet. The proposed ordinance would change that by establishing clear standards for smaller lots across the R2 district. Importantly, this approach does not add new design mandates like garage or porch placement that do not currently exist for larger lots in R2. Applying such requirements only to smaller lots would be inconsistent and could unintentionally create barriers to the very housing diversity we are trying to promote. This ordinance simply creates the legal framework for smaller lots to be developed citywide within R2. Any affordability incentives or special programs to encourage this type of housing could be addressed separately without overcomplicating the zoning code itself. By adopting this change, we will expand attainable housing options, make more efficient use of available land, and do so without imposing unnecessary regulatory burdens or infrastructure strain. I urge your support. Respectfully, Craig Loken, Vice Chair, Moline Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay, is that all?
That's all.
Thank you very much. We have a few board appointments in the next item. Mayor's appointment of Reese Tweenstraugh to the Park and Recreation Board to fill the unexpired term of Nathan Tilburg to expire May 31, 2028. And then Mayor's reappointment of Leslie Sangkrati and Diane Fox to the Moline Housing Authority for five-year terms to expire July 31, 2023. And just for information's sake, they have been on there as resident representatives on the MHA, and Ms. Tweenstraugh is a lawyer, and that's a unique addition to the park board. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we move to our presentation for, in recognition of Vicki Graves for her outstanding dedication and years of service to the Moline community. So do we join me up there at that microphone?
Other side of the podium, it's fine. Yeah, facing me over here. Almost like I'm swearing, but. Michael pick us up here. But I just wanted to say a few words before formal words, and that is that this is the first time I'm taking the time to recognize someone from one of our boards and commissions at our regular meetings, and I'm happy to do that now because I see, of course, after four years, the incredible amount of time and energy that goes into being on a board and commission, especially one as such as the Plan Commission. So thank you for being the first. I want to say that tonight, we recognize and thank Vicki Graves for her dedicated service on the City of Moline Plan Commission, serving six years from 2019 to 2025. Her insight and thoughtful contributions have played an important role in shaping responsible development and long-term planning for our city. Vicki's commitment to community goes beyond the Plan Commission. She also serves on the Board of Trustees for the Platoon Museum and Science Center, as well as the Board for the Center for Youth and Family Solutions. Engaged residents like Vicki are the backbone of a strong community. On behalf of the City of Moline, we thank her for her service, leadership, and the positive impact she continues to make in our community. Please join me in expressing our sincere appreciation to Vicki Graves for her service to Moline.
Thank you so much. There you have it. Thank you. And I did want to say too, you know, for those on the council that weren't here since 2021, right, you've been a part of major developments, and the last ones I can think about were the Form Is Code and major, major lift as we are seeing now and seeing how it works. So thank you for all of that work.
Well, it's my pleasure. I'm a Molineer's expert, so it's my absolute pleasure, and I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions on the agenda is our next item. There are a couple of clarifications. First, on July 22nd, at that meeting, item 20.2 was listed on the Cal Agenda, and the motion was revised to add Coal Valley. When it was moved forward to this agenda for 8.5, the item was not updated. When the clerk reads the item aloud, the wording will be read as it is listed on the council bill. And I read this, correct?
You don't have to.
Okay. And it'll include the Coal Valley as we've been anticipating. And the second piece of clarification is item 18.8 is scheduled for both Cal and council tonight. It will be removed from the consent agenda resolutions and placed under the non-consent agenda resolutions to ensure the correct process is followed. Okay? Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, we move to 8.1. A resolution approving the amended 2025 Capital Improvement Plan and the 2026 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan as presented during the roundtable discussion at the City Council meeting held on July 15, 2025. Mr. Dreyer, it's all you.
That's not me. I gave Carol the night off. Evening, everyone. This item is just a continuation of our capital improvement project presentation on July 15th. Approval tonight will let us start the process and the planning and design and get this work started and moving forward towards implementation. With that said, I'm available to answer questions.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Timian, seconded by Finch. Discussion? We were pretty thorough the other night, but I see.
No.
Question? All right.
He must have done a great.
And just to clarify, is that a question?
No, no, it was thumbs up.
Oh, just to clarify, we do this so you can get started, but we can continue to amend it as we go through the budget.
Oh, yeah.
I'd just like to state that for the public as well.
It is your show.
Yeah.
It's your show.
Thank you. All right. Hearing nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Oh, sorry. Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. 8.2. Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a notice of intent to award Leander Construction, Inc., for the North Slope Wastewater Treatment Plant Chemical Phosphorus Removal Improvements Project for the amount of $1,539,000. Mr. Vitas?
Sure. More than happy to, and Laura, if you'd like to come up as well, if there's any questions beyond what I'm going to say. So yeah, we're recommending approval of the agreement or the contract going to Leander Construction in the amount that the mayor defined at $1,539,000 for the purposes of removing chemical phosphorus from the processing wastewater treatment plant number two.
It's a requirement of the IEP that we have to do this.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? I'm glad it's a simple explanation. Hearing nothing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.3. A resolution authorizing the Chief of Police to execute a memorandum of understanding with the YWCA of the Quad Cities for a partnership in support of the Place to Be Transitional Living Program to provide outreach and services to homeless and exploited youth. Chief?
Thank you, Your Honor. The YWCA of the Quad Cities operates the Place to Be, a transitional living program. The Place to Be is seeking to enter into a formal MOU, which is in front of you tonight with the Moline Police Department, to enhance identification, outreach, and referral of homeless youth in Moline. The director, Nicole Sotawasser, if you remember her, she's been in front of you before because she was the original social worker that started with us in 2019 from CYFS and built out our social work program at the police department, which is still in existence. She ended up, she did such a great job, she was marketable, right? So she left to take the director job at the Place to Be, but I'll tell you, she still volunteers at the police department as a social worker, and she is currently at Night Out, National Night Out right now, doing a little bit of both, social work and handing out goodies for the Place to Be. So the Place to Be opened in 2010, the outcome of a local group of human service providers who all believed that youth at risk homelessness in the United States, or I'm sorry, in the Quad Cities were underserved. Since that time, the Place to Be has seen many changes and a lot of growth. One constant is the youth who come looking to the Place to Be for meals, life skills, resources, mental health linkage, counseling, employment opportunities, and more. Programming has expanded to encompass street outreach, school outreach, homeless prevention, and transitional living program. If you've been through Rock Island, you'll see their new black and, I think it's orange, building there downtown. That is Allen's House, a construction began on that this past spring, which is a 10-bed emergency group home for youth who are experiencing out-of-home placement, unaccompanied minors placement with the Department of Children and Family Services, or placement with CYFS for crisis intervention services. That is expected to open here in the next month. Throughout outreach partnership and work with the Moline Police Department, more youth will be identified and served through the Place to Be and Allen's House, ultimately providing a safe place for youth to stay. Fewer police calls for loitering teenagers, and the served youth will be connected to case management, counseling, activities, supporting civic engagement, improving life skills, and organized recreation. They currently serve over 75 youth, and with the partnership with the police department, they are anticipating serving an additional 75 in the year to come. We are asking for approval tonight. They are seeking some grant funding, and so this partnership will also help them demonstrate the community partnerships to serve these individuals.
Thank you. Motion to approve? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion?
I just have a question. This is great. I think this is a wonderful thing that we're doing. Is the ride-alongs going to be just in Moline, or are they going to be going into?
Yeah, it's just for Moline. I'm not even sure we could.
That's fine.
You know, there may be a situation where, you know, we venture outside of our adjacent jurisdiction, but for all intents and purposes here, this is Moline. And she already does ride-alongs as a volunteer through the Human Resources Volunteer Agreement, but, and so she'll now, I think, be a little bit more connected to the Place to Be, but she's a pretty dedicated public servant.
I appreciate that this is on the agenda just days after you and I were talking about my conference content, and we should just keep this as a part of our conversation.
Yeah, and, you know, speaking with City Minister Vitas, I mean, this is another great, you know, we don't necessarily need to be an operator, we can be a funder, we can be a participant, we can be a partner, and this is a great. They're having a little bit of trouble getting some of the DCFS paperwork worked out to try to get some of the placements up and running, but once they get through these hoops, I think it'll be a great place and a great addition to our services.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. 8.4. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a joint funding agreement for federally funded construction of motor fuel tax section number 22-00288-00-SW, Safe Routes to School, Lincoln Irving Elementary School, and authorizing a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code appropriating motor fuel tax funds for the city's local match for motor fuel tax section number 22-00288-00-SW, Safe Routes to School, Lincoln Irving Elementary School, for the amount of $276,420.60. Mr. Dreyer.
Boy, who writes that one?
Yeah, I wonder.
That's a mouthful. This is a formality to, the state requires us to follow to authorize the use of motor fuel tax money for this project. This is a safer school project that was initiated four years ago, and it's reached this point now where we're getting ready to construct it in the summer of '26, so we're looking for approval for that. The project is, was, genesis of the project was a safe routes to school plan that the school district and the city, I guess, worked on many years ago, and we applied for the program, and this is where we're at today. So we're looking forward to completing this project.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Macias, seconded by Finch. Discussion?
Thank you.
Yep. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.5. A resolution approving a licensing agreement for the 2025 Mercado on Fifth season, scheduled for May 23, 2025, through October 3, 2025, with October 10, 2025, rain date. Closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic, and authorizing the use of public right-of-way in conjunction with said event.
Staff wholeheartedly recommends approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.6. A resolution approving a special event that is sponsored by Tootsie's Tribe for the Gabe's Gift Memorial 5K and One Mile Fun Run Event, scheduled for Saturday, September 6, 2025. Closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic, and authorizing the use of public right-of-way in conjunction with said event.
Straight up, we recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.7. A resolution approving a special event that is sponsored by the St. Mary's Catholic Church for the Parish Carnival, scheduled for Sunday, September 21, 2025. Closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic, and authorizing the use of public right-of-way in conjunction with said event.
Another great event in downtown Moline, we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.8. An ordinance amending Chapter 35, zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances regarding certain additions to the zoning and land development regulations, including amendments to Article 1, General Provisions and Administration, Division 2, Word Usage, Abbreviations, and Definitions, Section 35-1203, Definitions, Article 3, Zoning, Definition, Division 4, Land Use Regulations. Section 35-3401, Regulation of Allowed Uses, Table 35-3401.1, Permitted Land Uses, Section 35-3409, Principal Transportation and Utility Land Uses, and Section 35-3415, Accessory Transportation and Utility Land Uses Concerning Commercial Principal and Accessory Solar Energy Systems. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, Mayor, Council, we're happy to present you with an ordinance amendment which would allow for solar energy systems to be allowed in the zoning ordinance of the city in Chapter 35, and this was presented through the Plan Commission. It has been approved. This would allow for future solar development on agriculturally zoned land specifically. And it doesn't really, it doesn't apply to the other zoning classifications, but specifically agricultural. And we're looking forward to this being approved so that as we receive the future bids that we expect next week, that we should be able to see some type of a solar project develop south of the Quad City International Airport on land owned by the city specifically. So we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.9. An ordinance amending Chapter 5, Amusements of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 5-1101C, by increasing the number of video gaming terminal licensed establishments in the city at the request of owner Jeremy Webb of Webb Services LLC, doing business as Casey's Tavern, 151215th Street, Moline. Yep.
Staff is recommending, excuse me, recommending approval of the request for Casey's Tavern for Mr. Webb to have the gaming machines, and it's basically a change of ownership. So we require, this item and the next one require approval by council. Can't simply transfer the license, it has to be reapplied.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Castro.
So they currently, the previous owner, previous owner had a license, and the new owner is requesting.
Is required to have their own, correct?
I'm sorry.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.10. An ordinance amending Chapter 5, Amusements of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 5-1101C, by increasing the number of video gaming terminal licensed establishments in the city at the request of Jessica Bernauer, purchaser of the Dew Drop Inn, 3624th Avenue, Moline.
Mayor, Council, staff's recommending approval. Similar situation as the preceding matter, Mr. Webb, new owner for the Dew Drop Inn, and requiring their own licensing for their gaming machines.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. 8.11. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with FGM Architects Incorporated for new central fire station Phase 1A, 50% schematic design proposal, architectural renderings for the amount of $51,900.
Mayor, Members of Council, we are recommending approval of the Second Amendment to the agreement that was entered into several years ago, actually, so that would allow for FGM Architects to proceed with this 50% schematic designs, which will lead then to a more definitive construction cost estimate for the project. So we're recommending approval at this time.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.12. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an assignment of development agreement between the City of Moline, SJ Russell, LLC, Dial Point at Moline, Phase 1, LLC, Dial Point at Moline, Phase 2, LLC, and Sabra Healthcare Holdings, Sabra Healthcare Holdings, Three, L.L.C., and to execute any necessary agreements referenced therein, and authorizing all appropriate city officers, city attorney and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities pursuant to said assignment and the underlying agreement.
City Attorney.
All right. Mr. Atkins.
With regards to this particular resolution, we were approached by Sabra and, and the other entities involved here, there has previously been an assignment made, and all of the various entities from the very beginning with S.J. Russell L.C. are listed here as being involved in this. The assignment document contained in your packet is the document that is to be signed by the city, I believe it has already been signed by the pertinent parties. The prior assignee would be the assignor for the assignment that is currently happening to the new assignee. The only thing that the city is doing is agreeing that it's okay for this assignment to occur. The city is not assigning anything or, or giving anything, you're not changing your position at all, it's just who it is that is going to be in charge of, of this particular development. It'll be just a different partner in the development agreement, so to speak.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point one-three, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-five zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section Thirty-five dash thirty-two-oh-four, R-two, one-family residence district, by repealing Section Thirty-five dash thirty-two-oh-four in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Section Thirty-five dash thirty-two-oh-four, dealing with the same subject matter. An amending Table Thirty-five dash thirty-two-oh-one-point-one, residential and resource districts' principal structure bulk standards, by repealing Table Thirty-five dash thirty-two-oh-one-point-one in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Table Thirty-five dash thirty-two-oh-one-point-one, dealing with the same subject matter. An amending Table Thirty-five dash thirty-two-oh-one-point-two-point-one, residential and resource districts' building lot coverage, by repealing Table Thirty-five thirty-two-oh-one-point-two-point-one in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Table Thirty-five dash thirty-two-oh-one-point-two-point-one, dealing with the same subject matter. An amending Table Thirty-five dash five-one-zero-zero-point-three, minimum required parking spaces, by repealing Table Thirty-five dash five-one-zero-zero-point-three in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Table Thirty-five dash five-one-zero-zero-point-three, dealing with the same subject matter. And this has been brought by two council members per our code, Mr. McNeil and Mr. Timian, so I'll turn it to them for the explanation.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, the bill in front of you recognizes that thirty percent of the lots within the city of Moline are under six thousand square feet, and this currently is our minimum lot size for constructing new homes within the city. This, this provides a lot, in our current situation, there are a lot of regulatory hurdles to jump through for infill development or even just smaller lot development. So, this bill changes bulk standards in R-two districts only for lots smaller than six thousand square feet. So, this is recognizing existing lots, and it removes a lot of the barriers in the way for developing on these lots. And, you know, all the, the bulk standards that are updated do not impact existing standards for any other zoning type, just small R-two lots. And this includes setbacks, it includes reducing it to one parking space instead of two, the theory is that these are smaller lots, maybe they only need one car instead of two, and relaxed setback requirements for front yard, backyard, minimum lot coverage and things, and these are all within the bill itself. So, that is the impetus for this, and Mr. McNeil, do you have anything else to add in terms of explanation?
Yeah, I would just add that I thank you, Alder Person, Timian, for your leadership. I'm pleased to support this and co-sponsor this, and I'd also like to thank the members of the Plan Commission for their public comment support. Just simply, to me, this is about equity and efficiency. As a city, we're looking for ways to increase housing opportunities, and we know we have barriers to development, so it just, as Alder Person, Timian has said, and members of the Plan Commission, this makes it easier for infill development, supports a broader range of housing choices, and it removes unnecessary regulatory barriers. So, I encourage my colleagues to support this and hoping that it moves forward.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to advance to city council meeting.
Second. Motion by Timian, seconded by Finch. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Atkins.
I just wanted to address an issue of procedure. You, as the city council, have the power to decide this without it going through Plan Commission. That is the, the usual way in which these things occur, but it is not required to do that. What is required is that there be appropriate notice and a public hearing. In order to give the appropriate notice, the statute calls for any change to a zoning code to give at least a fifteen-day notice and no more than a thirty-day notice, which we can do for your, your next scheduled meeting, the twenty-sixth, I believe it is. We have, I believe, until Monday to get the notice into the paper. And so, if you anticipate doing this at a city council meeting, it would actually be a public hearing where individuals would be allowed to come in and testify either in favor or against, and they would, would come in and testify just the way that things are done at the Plan Commission when they have a hearing, but it can be done in front of this body instead of sending it to the Plan Commission. Alternatively, you could refer it to the Plan Commission and have them conduct a hearing with appropriate notice given. Either of those are acceptable, and it is entirely up to this body which of those methods you choose to, to exercise.
Thank you. Mr. Timian, can you share with the council when this original, this idea of yours was shared with Plan Commission?
So, when Mr. Mathias joined city staff, he met with a number of, I think he met with most of us on, on city council, and asked what we wanted to do, and I initially talked to him about that. So, this was a year and a half or more ago. It went on the agenda for the Plan Commission for twenty-twenty-four to address by the end of the year, along with a number of other items, and it obviously didn't get addressed because we're here in July of twenty-five, still talking about it. So, this has been something, if you've talked to me about zoning for more than fifteen minutes, you've heard me complain about small lots, and this is something I, I think is pretty important, and, and so, I've, I've been talking with the staff about it for quite a while.
Thank you. And as you've heard, you have updated the entire Plan Commission?
Correct.
Not just the two leaders we heard from in public comment?
Correct, I did email the entire Plan Commission, primarily because it's not my intention to usurp authority, I understand their role. I also understand that, in our own experience, when we have asked them to work on things in the past, it will take a month to three months to get done, and we, I would like to get it done before then, because delays do, they tend to expand, and, and so, if we're happy with, the bill is written, and we have two readings in which we can amend it if, if needed. But I've emailed the entire Plan Commission about this and spoken at length to both the Chair and Vice Chair. I, I shared the rough rap with them a few months ago.
Thank you. Mr. Atkins.
I just wanted to make it clear, if you want this to proceed at city council, there's no need to make any kind of amendment, it's just like a regular COW item to go forward to the city council agenda. So, you don't need to change anything, it's only if you decided to send it to Plan Commission that you would need to make any kind of change in what you were voting.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Here, oop, was that a hint? Yes, Mr. Castro.
So, to clarify, when we're voting, right now, we're voting for it to go to city council, or are we voting for the...
Voting for it to go to city council, that's, your vote will be to put it on to your agenda for the second meeting of the month, the twenty-fifth or whenever it is, as an item on the city council, not the COW agenda.
Thanks. Yes, Mr. Messias.
Thank you, and I just want to thank you for doing this and working on this, and also, you know, housing has been a big priority for us, and we've done other changes to stimulate just more housing, and again, this is not going to solve everything, but it is just another piece that's going to help us, so I appreciate you doing the work with this and with the timing, too. You know, I think back four years ago or whenever, just the cost of things, and with tariffs looming, you know, the, those are going to discourage builders and developers, so anything we can do to encourage and, again, stimulate just building more housing, I'm all for.
Okay, anything further from the council? Mr. Timian?
I, I will mention that this is, this problem is not unique to Moline, and the solution is not unique to Moline either. There are a number of communities throughout the country that have adopted infill development standards to release regulatory burden, to make it just easier to put anything in these empty lots, and, and do we want community gardens? Yes. Do we want people to have bigger yards? Sure. Do we want housing? Absolutely. And, and this is just knocking down those barriers so that developer doesn't have to buy a lot, get an architect, submit for a variance, and roll the dice hoping that it's approved, and if they're rejected, then they're stuck with a lot they can't sell. And so, we're just trying to knock down a lot of barriers so that a, a developer that wants to take on a, a small project like this can without, you know, just all the, the red tape involved.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing further, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point fourteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Moline and the Public Safety Training Foundation for use of the Public Safety Training Foundation's facilities. Chief.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, as you know, we have a crisis containment unit, or more commonly referred to as a SWAT team. That team is highly trained, highly skilled, and they typically go to this facility annually to receive additional advanced training. In the past, they've traveled with the FBI, they're not traveling with the FBI this year, so the agreement that the FBI had with the Public Safety Training Foundation is, we can't use. So, the agreement that they sent to us requires that the city council pass a resolution, I'm sure legal counsel can expand upon that, but this allows our team to go there and receive the advanced training, they'll be going in September, so it does not need to go on tonight, we have another reading for it, but they will be attending at this facility in September for their advanced training. So, staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point fifteen, an ordinance rescinding ordinance number three-zero-one-five dash two-zero-two-four, and partially rescinding a redevelopment and economic incentive agreement by and between the city of Moline, Renew Moline Properties LLC, seventeen-oh-one series and seventeen-oh-one Fifth Avenue LLC. Mr. Vitas.
Yes, Mayor and Council, before you is an ordinance which would in part rescind the redevelopment agreement that we entered into with Bush Construction and Renew Moline several years ago, back, I believe it was in twenty-twenty-three, actually, in March, if I'm not mistaken. Twenty-four? Okay. I'm hearing from Alex, she held up four fingers. So, anyhow, we are, we are looking to rescind this in part due to the inability to proceed with the project as is originally contemplated. As that project was originally contemplated, we expected that there would be thirty-two units and a third floor addition built on top of J.C. Penney. As Bush learned after they acquired the property, after they entered into the agreement, the difficulties they encountered with the State of Illinois Historic Preservation Office, SHPO for short, limiting the ability to establish a third floor on the building there by reducing the density from thirty-two units down to about twenty-two units, just round math, and then further working with the U.S. Department of Interior and coming back with plans for a project that would reduce it to fifteen, but no more than eighteen units depending upon the first floor usage. At that time, there was plans, again, for a thirty-two unit building, there was plans for a daycare center to be on Fifth Avenue and the commercial front. Western has walked away from that as an option, they've explored other alternatives, and the project basically does not pencil as it was originally contemplated after many, almost a year of discussion. So, we are recommending to rescind the agreement based upon the way it is. The city's financial commitment of two-point-eight million dollars for this project does go away with rescinding of this agreement. This project then becomes a pay-as-you-go project, similar to what's going on both with the Modern Two, Mr. Thompson, as well as Mr. Anderson's Moline Dispatch Building on Fifth Avenue. So, we are recommending that the agreement be rescinded in part. We do continue to work with Bush as they explore other alternatives for J.C. Penney Phase One, as well as other buildings that they are exploring downtown, and trying to couple these projects together so that the financial viability of the J.C. Penney building can actually go forward. Historic tax credits were basically the underlying cause for the project not to get the approvals necessary, as was originally planned and conceived and presented to council and, and also at the PMT. So, we're recommending rescindment tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Mr. Timian?
Bob, was that two-point-eight budgeted in twenty-twenty-five?
That two-point-eight has been budgeted since the agreement was entered into.
So, I, I understand we want to work with them on an alternative.
Correct.
Is it best to hold on to that money or spend it elsewhere?
The money itself, you know, is, is general fund dollars, so those dollars will remain in the general fund, and between Carol and I, we've really looked at the Special Capital Improvement Project Fund as the location where that money will reside.
Okay, I think that's smart.
Yeah, it gives some flexibility, not only for further discussions with, you know, Bush or any other developer for any other property in the community, especially downtown.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. We move to our informational, nine-point-one, August twenty-twenty-five, status and information report. Mr. Vitas.
Very, very briefly, Mayor and Council, before you this evening, is the status and information report for the month ending July, of course, and here we are, August fifth. We continue to make progress on multiple fronts. Our comprehensive plan update, which I know we have been anxiously awaiting to get launched, we did receive fourteen responses to that, to that bid proposal process. We have narrowed it down to seven at this point, and I expect that a recommendation will be coming forward from staff at the August twenty-sixth regular city council meeting to award that contract to a responsible firm. Beyond that, we, this morning, actually, there was a pre-construction meeting to kick off the Sixteenth Street, Arsenal Bridge Deck Reconstruction Project, something that several years ago, longer than I've been here, actually, but many years ago, was, was contemplated, and we're now in a position where that project will launch in September, you know, and that, of course, as you'll recall, was funded by a Defense Community Infrastructure Program grant of nearly eleven million dollars. So, and, and our costs, of course, were engineering-related specifically for that project, so we're looking forward to that getting kicked off. You know, the, we continue to try and, and move forward with our I E P A lead line replacement project. We've run into some questions on that, both with I E P A and with the contractor, and we are working through those as well. But that project will go forward, because as you know, that was an I E P A grant, I believe it was two-point-six million dollars bill, if I'm not mistaken, or Lori, two-point-six million? So, we are working, working toward that, but if there's questions, I'm happy to answer them and won't be a labor of the report that we presented to council.
Any comments, questions? I'm just thankful that you continue to update that for all the directors, I appreciate your time.
No, no, I really appreciate the work that the directors are doing and, and the information they provide, so that not only the council is fully informed, but the general public, because these documents are all posted live, they're all online, so at any time, somebody has the ability to find out what we're doing across all departments, and across all funds, actually, so.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, we'll close that meeting out and call a regular council meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic which stands on nation, and their God, and his will, for the freedom and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation, Mr. Timian?
I do not.
Great. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Ms. Murphy? Messias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
McNeil?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt? All right, we have no remote electronic attendance. Public comment at this time? No. Consent agenda.
Your Honor, I request the approval of Special Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of July fifteen, twenty-twenty-five, Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, and appointment... twenty twenty-five, and appointments made at committee of the whole on August fifth, twenty twenty-five, and consent agenda items seventeen point one through eighteen point eight inclusively.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Messias. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number eighteen point eight, a resolution authorizing the chief of police to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Y W C A of the Quad Cities for a partnership in support of the Place-to-Be Transitional Living Program to provide outreach and services to homeless and exploited youth. Motion to approve. Second. Uh, that was Finch?
Finch and Castro.
And Razak.
Castro.
Castro, Finch and Castro. Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a second amendment to the Development and Economic Incentive Agreement between the city of Moline and Dolan Commons LLC for the development project and to execute any necessary agreements referenced therein, and authorizing all appropriate city officers and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities pursuant to said agreement. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point two, a resolution authorizing the chief of police on behalf of the city of Moline to execute a Rock Island County e-citation in our governmental agreement by and between the Rock Island County Circuit Clerk and the respective law enforcement jurisdictions of the Rock Island County Sheriff, cities of Moline, East Moline, Silves, Rock Island, and villages of Coal Valley and Mylan for the implementation and use of an electronic citation, e-citation system. Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Thank you for reading that correctly. If there's nothing further, roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an assignment of development agreement between the city of Moline, S.J. Russell, L.C., Dial Point at Moline Phase One, L.L.C., Dial Point at Moline Phase Two, L.L.C., and Sabra Healthcare Holdings Three, L.L.C., and to execute any necessary agreements referenced therein, authorizing all appropriate city officers, city attorney, and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities pursuant to said assignment in the underlying agreement. Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point four, a resolution approving the content of the executive session minutes and authorizing the release and continued retention respectively of certain executive session minutes, and authorizing the destruction of certain verbatim recordings of the executive sessions. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none? All of, roll, roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point five, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Odo Baum Company, Inc., for project fourteen ninety-nine, twenty twenty-five Midtown Parking Ramp Repairs, for the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and zero cents. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point six, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Langman Construction, Inc., for project number fourteen ninety, twenty twenty-five Stormwater Project, Thirty-Four Street Drainage Improvements, for the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents. Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number twenty-one point one, an ordinance amending chapter twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix thirty-five, altered speed limits, by reducing the speed limit along Fiftieth and Fifty-first avenues to twenty miles per hour from Sixtieth Street East to Green Valley Park. Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Messias. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty-one point two, an ordinance amending chapter twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix ten thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing Ninth Street on the east side from Railroad Avenue South for a distance of a hundred and ten feet, and adding Ninth Street on the east side from Railroad Avenue South for a distance of eighty-five feet, and amending chapter twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix eleven thereof, parking prohibited at certain times, by adding on Monday through Friday, eight a.m. to five p.m., Ninth Street on the east side, beginning at a point of eighty-five feet south of Railroad Avenue, extending south for thirty feet. Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Messias. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty-one point three, an ordinance amending chapter four, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, to prohibit Class C package sales only, liquor licensees from simultaneously holding Class B tavern liquor licenses.
Motion to approve, or motion to advance the second reading.
Second. Motion by Timian, seconded by Finch. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Timian?
Thank you for doing this. This has been a, this has been a bother for quite some time, and I'm glad we're getting this cleaned up.
I just will reiterate, since our meeting feels like it was really long ago, we want to reach for other levels of economic development and not be forced into this level of economic Thank you. If there's nothing further, roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty-one point four, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, planning and development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-five dash two one zero zero, official comprehensive plan adopted, territorial application, by amending the official comprehensive plan as follows: By adopting and adding new text at appendices adopted, page one, and by adopting and adding to the appendices adopted, a new appendix R entitled Moline River Front Plus Center Plan. Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries, and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Okay. Couple things for the council. I'm not quite sure if I forwarded this information to you. I may have, but I think it's worthy to note to the community as well that the Level Up program continues to do good work, but the Level B portion of it is now out of money. And that, I believe that was sixty thousand we set aside. I don't know if Carol's online anymore, but out of that cannabis tax income, and that was the same as the year before. But we've reached that, and by the end of July, it's all gone. So, I ask staff to look at any other options they can bring forward to us, or what other programs are offered through Project Now or other programs. I know KJ, Ms. Whitley was up here talking about an IDA program before the meeting started. Just know that. And I know Ms. Murphy has mentioned time and again in our conversations about, around budget and services, that people are going to be hungry, people are going to be needy. Their, the economic situation, people who have never experienced those issues are experiencing them now. I can tell you, too, I, I got a interesting email from University of Illinois Extension, and because of the changes in the federal budget bill, there's a whole slew of SNAP education professionals through the Extension Office that are losing their jobs, right? People who have never been in this position before necessarily. So, I think as we think about where our money's going, and we're being very careful with those assignments, just know that this is the situation we're at already by the end of July. So, being proactive is what I'm encouraging. I also think it's okay to state, I think you were on that email, that
Sure.
We've had a conversation with our already established sister city in Asbach, Germany, where there's a John Deere plant, to restart that relationship with them coming to visit us here. So, we're looking at later April next year, and Ashley Allen Smith is coordinating a lot of that along with Macy McManus. And so, it should be a very exciting time around here to host them. I know the former mayor went there, I want to say, in twenty seventeen or nineteen. I don't remember, but, but that's what we're looking at, is, is sharing all that is Moline with friends from Germany.
You went to dates.
I mean, it's still
No, they just happened, you know?
Yeah, okay.
So, the dates of the visit will be Monday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-sixth, through Wednesday, the twenty-ninth of April, so they'll be here for three days.
My birthday.
They can come to our birthday. We, it's Schmitty, excuse me, Alderman Schmidt, myself and Messias' birthday all on those dates right there.
Oh, that, that's great. So, we'll have these three birthday dates. I like it.
All right.
One less thing to plan.
Also, many of you know, I posted about it on my mayor Facebook page. I was at In Albuquerque for the Mayor's Innovation Project Summer Meeting. That's one that I go to quite often. I thought the topics were really relevant to what county councils are looking at. Alternative responses to policing, right, was the first topic. I had good conversation that I alluded to earlier with Chief while I was in that session, sort of finding out. And we can be proud of Chief once again for having the expertise to, you've been going around the state talking about our Illinois state solution for those kinds of things, right? Can you tell us what SESA stands for again? Sorry, I'm on-the-spot SESA talk.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, you've read City Administrator Vitas's stats information reports over your time on the council. So, there's a lot of detail in, in those stats information reports over the last few years, but it's the Community Emergency Services Supports Act. It was passed in twenty twenty-one by Governor Pritzker, and it has been delayed over the years because this is a very complex landscape to get something like this going. I can tell you, though, that Rock Island County is very far ahead the rest of the entire state. We have mobile crisis response that is, is up and running, fully staffed at our 590 provider, which is Robert Young. We use them on a, on a regular basis, and they respond in the field. We have already adopted alternative response models in our dispatch center. We can't roll them out fully with some limitations until the, the law goes into full effect in July, July of twenty twenty-seven. But we've already, my goal when I was appointed on this board and I've traveled around the state, my goal when I make these speeches to entities, organizations, is to plant the seed. And you try to plant the seed of change, when we need to make the changes, we, the transition is smooth. So, I'll compliment the fire chief and, and his deputy chief, VMS, have worked very hard. This largely affects VMS sector significantly because they take on more burden, for that's probably why you've seen a little bit of their call volume increase and ambulance services expanding in Moline. But they're already receiving dispatch protocols in a different manner than we had prior to twenty twenty-one that, that SESA intends to go into full effect in July twenty twenty-seven. So, I won't belabor you with it. A lot of that detail is in those stats information reports, but I can tell you that Rock Island County, particularly Moline, is much farther along than anyone else in the state. Outside of maybe some pilot projects, there's a pilot project in Peoria, so outside of some of those other ones.
So, it, it was just a good session that highlighted some ethic that we're already doing, even though it's very complex, and even though other cities of different sizes have other mechanisms and other responsibilities. I think how we're fractured, in a sense, in how we get care to people, it makes it a little more complex, but it was a good session. The homelessness session was excellent. The thing that comes to mind the most about that, and I know we've shared some ideas among council members, I've had ongoing conversations with Ms. Whitley and some with Chief and Mr. Mathias, and especially at the ward meetings and the listening posts about homelessness. But the one takeaway from an organization called Community Services was that if you are not planning for housing when you're dealing with someone getting them off the street, at that point in time, you've already lost, because the idea is not to just meet Because the idea is not to just meet the emergency need, but to meet the stabilization need, right? So, um, I will be happy to share the packet that I shared with staff, the briefing book. Um, I'll share it with the council if you're interested in that information um, because I think it'll keep coming up as we decide how we're spending dollars on vulnerable populations, et cetera, and how we get back to this issue of housing that was part of our zoning talk is the different types of housing that we need, the different programs and partners that we need. There also was a session on civic rights, ACLU representatives. Um, a lot didn't feel quite applicable to our size city. Um, and heat resilience, that was the big, um, one of the last big sessions, I thought. Um, there's some good stuff there in the briefing book that we should be looking at as we are looking at our climate resilience plan that's coming back. Um, so I'll make sure you all have that as well. So that's it for me. Mr. Macias.
Uh, yes, Your Honor. On the twenty-sixth, Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, um, the Vibrant Arena will be having the Immigrant Entrepreneur Summit. It's coming back to Moline. Um, in the past, we've had Alderman Razak there, and I'll be there this year again. So just, um, throwing it out there, if anybody's interested in checking it out. Uh, there's a lot of younger business owners and entrepreneurs that I've never seen before. Um, and I work with a lot of immigrant communities, uh, but it's just, I see it year after year growing. And, uh, so yeah, if you have some time, uh, come check it out. Uh, it's from like eight-thirty, I believe, to about two or three o'clock, so.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Razak.
Thank you, Ronar. I have counsel, um, I have ward meeting on Thursday, seventh, from six to seven. I'm inviting.
I will be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Timian.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I had the pleasure of visiting a new sober living facility, um, on behalf of the mayor the other day. And it's also in my ward, so it kind of doubled. It was, it was good. But it, it's a good facility within a residential neighborhood that is really just a converted home and provides a stepping stone for people coming out of treatment facilities to get back on their feet. And it's highly structured. I, I believe it's, it's a, it's a good program and it can help some people locally. And I'm just, I'm glad they chose Moline to put this. One of the requirements, the gentleman told me, was proximity to bus lines. And he said this particular house is within walking distance to ten different bus lines. And so, you know, they're, they're trying to plan around that and very cognizant of the neighborhood to not disrupt any one of the neighborhood as well.